All right. I'd like to call to order a work session for, actually a budget review session for council. And can I get a roll call, please?
All right, we got councilperson Tony Abbott absent. We got councilperson Justin Oppert.
Sir.
Councilperson Tommy Rellet.
Present.
We got councilperson Lenny Fryman, not here. We got councilperson Brett Landert.
Yes, sir.
We got Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay. I hope you guys had a chance to review each department in the budget. Some things that I want to point out that might strike you. We've got a couple of projects that are funded in the budget. That could be redevelopment projects. So I want to make you guys aware of that upfront. So because you guys would have to appro- because it's coming out of Rainy Day. If you guys remember, when we started collecting on these loans and any kind of income that we were getting back to the city, we were sticking it in Rainy Day because Rainy Day you can use it for any, any. What do they call it?
Lawful purpose.
Lawful purpose, I'm sorry.
Can you speak up, please?
Didn't mean to make you talk. But for any lawful purpose, so we thought was the best place to put it was that. So we got a pretty healthy balance in our Rainy Day fund right now, a little over six million, I believe. And that is to be used for some of these projects. So I was there and possibly.
We wondered that.
Yeah.
Does that include the recent money that we received for settlements?
From litigation.
Litigation, yeah.
In the fire, yes.
Yes, yes.
Includes that?
Yes.
Good. So I wasn't aware that's what we were doing with those in the Rainy Day.
Well, we just thought it'd be the best place to put it, not knowing where we may need to use it.
Right, we could use it, yeah.
We can use it from there for anything.
Makes sense.
So for the money that we budgeted, I don't know how the page turned over.
Sure.
Can I say for the Liberty?
Uh huh.
Okay. We will budget that, but we in essence will have to give that money, put that over into redevelopment.
They will be the ones spending it.
Right.
Well, what I would like to do, and Tommy, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, no, no.
I think you're going the same direction I'm going.
No, no, no.
What I would like to do is I would like to take the part four, that project across the street. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to take that money and basically reword that and put that to LRC redevelopment. And then in LRC budget, add that same amount, be able to spend it, for them to be able to spend it next year.
I got you.
And then I was talking to Brittany on that, and she said probably, probably a good thing to do if you do it that way. And once again, this is upon council approval, is basically to do a resolution.
Resolution, yeah.
To have that, or you want to add to that?
I would recommend doing a transfer resolution because redevelopment, they are in their own commission and they do approve their own claims individually. So all of their spending, none of their spending goes through this board. So that way council is doing it, a resolution to transfer two million dollars from Rainy Day, give it to redevelopment and they will spend it based on their own board approval.
We can specify in that resolution what is to be spent, what project it's being spent on.
Yeah, we can be a specific.
He's gonna go rogue on us?
I don't expect that, you know. But yeah, I think that's a great way to do it.
I would rather go that direction.
I like it, if you guys, that's what you guys want to do.
Just on that one, I think the other one's probably okay.
Yeah.
Looking into it.
Because the other one that we budgeted, was it the one, two, or whatever?
One, six.
One, six.
Or no, one, five.
One, five.
One, five. If you get the average of two appraisals for that, we can purchase that without going through redevelopment anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
So that money would really be all right in council's budget.
Yes, they could stay in, they could stay in the city's name, which is probably worth it.
It's just the two over here that we would like to see, yeah.
This is mainly, the Liberty Theater is one that is a redevelopment project, they own the building.
So would we, I'll cut you off.
Okay.
Would we put that two plus the six we got from the REEDY grant, Ready Grant in there as well? In that?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That's a good point. We just got formal notification, I think, today.
On the Ready?
On the grant.
I will say REEDY, not Ready.
So is there a fund that that REEDY goes into then, or does that just go into, is it?
The Ready Grant?
Yeah.
If we're gonna spend directly from redevelopment, it would go into two ninety-one, which is in our redevelopment. Which is, we will.
On reverting, okay.
I'll update your budget to include two million. So right now it says two million Liberty Project in Rainy Day, we'll change that to be LRC funding. And then we will add a two million dollar budget in redevelopment to say Liberty Theater Project.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
So it's the beginning of twenty-three.
Appropriation, you just, we're really.
This way you wouldn't have.
Really not spending it, but you gotta, you gotta do the thing where it looks like you're spending four, but you're really only spending two.
Right, right. I got caught up in that before.
I know, I know.
Beat my head on that, yeah. I'm hard headed sometimes, it don't get in there too.
Yeah, double, double accounts for it.
Yeah.
Because of the transaction.
It does, yes.
No, that's a great point, thanks for explaining that.
Like I said, it's up to the council and of course you, but I just, I'd rather go that direction. That way we don't have any, any problems later on.
Okay. Anything as we go through, you guys want to specifically?
Page two.
Look at, okay. Page two.
IT assistant.
Yes.
One, one, two. I spoke, and I'm just bringing this up, I spoke with Bryson sometime back a week or so ago. And I'm like, Bryson, what's going on with your system? And he feels that we're just not offering enough money. And I know we give him a raise already.
He, he has not told me that.
Wonder why not? Because I had a conversation with him, what's going on?
We have solicited another round of resumes.
Okay.
And he gets back next week, we're gonna do interviews next week.
Okay.
But I think Jenny's already gotten thirteen, thirteen resumes. I told her, I said it's worth another shot.
Okay.
To see where we go.
I didn't know if it's something that we want to consider because I know we're not having a clerical position in there anymore. So it's just food for thought.
That's a good point.
You know, he.
I think that it might be something that they may want to come back to. We may want to come back to you guys if indeed we're not successful on this.
Right.
That'd be fine with me, I'd rather go with.
Well, I mean, his bar is pretty high for this position.
I don't know what it is.
He's.
I don't know what it is, yeah.
Yeah, that's good, you know, that's, and I'm not, we're not saying we want a lesser, lower bar a lot, but at some point, there's, you know.
There's a, there's.
Private sectors, they're paying silly money right now.
Yeah, absolutely they are, yeah. Okay, does that answer that question?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. If anybody else has anything.
No, keep going.
Page five.
Okay.
Police Department, one, 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 three, three. Why are we still having a resource officer in the budget?
Where are you at?
Uh, page five, one, one, three, police school resource officer.
That's not a police resource officer.
It says resource officer.
Yeah, we should probably change the wording on that.
Oh, down below.
Yeah, right there.
Need to change the wording.
No, that is not, that's not a resource officer.
Okay, now here's the thing. If I look at this budget and I go over to page, what is it, twenty-six?
Yeah.
Or seventeen?
MDF, yes.
Where we're paying the police department patrolman.
Oh.
Out of that, it's page seventeen, the LIT.
Yeah, that's lit.
Right, I understand what that is. But we only have like twelve in there. So really if we don't have a resource officer, are you gonna change that to a patrolman there and leave the twelve in the lit? Or do you add that position to the lit and make it thirteen? See what I'm saying?
I thought we accounted for all those in lit.
We did, when we had our budget meetings with the police department, I asked the police chief if there would be any changes in positions and he said no. So I wasn't aware at that time.
Oh.
So that is Brian Potts. So I think we can eliminate that line out of general and add a patrolman to the public safety lit line.
Right, that's what I was thinking. And that way they would all be right there.
We should do that. We should do that, honestly, that's a good, good catch. Good catch. We can make that change, right Brittany?
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right.
Page six.
Six.
One, one, four, clerical help in the clerk's office. You are doing twenty-one, nine, at three hundred and thirty-eight percent increase, which I have no problem with. My question is, are you going to give that position a raise over there?
Yes.
A well deserved raise.
Yes, that's, that's, you know, we accounted for fifteen in the salary ordinance.
Nothing happened.
Yeah.
And we did it for the lifeguards, but we didn't do anything for over there.
And we were able to, to each department, we're able to part time have their own raise.
We raised all the other departments part time to that one because it was the highest.
What, maybe that's what it was.
Yeah.
But still, in my opinion, for what that person does, that I can see, so may I ask, what that, is there, do you have a set amount?
Yes, fifteen now.
It'd be fifteen, okay.
For part time, yes.
We had never budgeted for what we would call a full time, part time. So we, we're gonna have her in there twenty-eight hours a week, we plan on it for every week, whereas before it was just help here and there. Because we used to have an extra full timer out there before someone got me.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that, because I'm like, that's, I, I, yeah. Okay.
Okay, what's next?
I want to say on page ten, how come council never gets any money to spend? What's going on, man?
You guys spent, hey, you guys got authority to say everything.
I had this discussion with Justin earlier. Okay. Page thirteen. This is for LLC, the community center, right? One, one, three, we budgeted a hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Do we have a number amount of people we hire for that? I mean.
Well, no, because it changes throughout the year.
I wondered that. So we just budget so much and then as we need or whatever, like when college is over and some of them come back.
Right, well, and, and we only hire X, X amount in the summer. And then like right now, I think there's two part time for after school program.
That sounds, that sounds right.
Okay.
But.
So there's not a, there's not a set amount, this is just what we budget to cover ourselves.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
Because it could change throughout the year.
Yeah, but that should be more, enough to cover our.
Okay, that's, yeah, I just thought maybe we finally figured out, this is how many we need, and this is what we budget.
What fund does income come into for that line item for the LCC?
Their supplies and services are budgeted out of MDF, so that's where their activity fees go into.
Okay. Which I know it's fairly minuscule, comparatively speaking, but there is a little bit.
Previously their payroll was budgeted out of Riverboat. And we've tried to move almost all, if not all, of payroll out of Riverboat and mostly general fund.
Oh, I, and I like that.
Did you guys notice that we did all that?
Oh, yeah, I noticed, and I'm like.
Okay.
And that's, I like that.
There shouldn't be anything left in there.
I really, really like it.
The only thing in Riverboat is an employee payout, so if someone were to retire, there's a payout line, they would be paid out for sick hours. But then we do have like redevelopment employees, they're paid out of redevelopment, not general. Parks is paid out of parks, not general. For the most part, almost everybody's general.
Okay. Next one?
Okay, and I'm confused on this one. Page sixteen. Three ninety-nine. We cut the fiber out completely, did I miss that? I got page twenty-six, is it, we moved it to something else, fiber, we're cutting, just cutting it out. Okay.
It's just funding.
Yeah.
Of the.
Well, I mean, if you look at the fund, there's a lot of money in the fund to cover the budget, so.
Well, the fiber funding is cut out of the budget. I think we had four hundred thousand out of Rainy Day.
And what it was this year?
For this year. So we monitor the fund balance to see if it needs money, because its revenues can't sustain its spending. And we've obviously funded it in the past, so we'll keep an eye on it through the end of the year. If it needs more, we can move it this year out of Rainy Day, but we didn't budget for next year because the balance is okay.
So most of that cash reserve that's in that account is from us, money that we've put in this year, essentially, or the past years.
It's not, it's not.
Right.
A sustainable amount.
Right, right, which is, that's been evident.
No comment. All right. Page seventeen. One twenty-five, this is LIT for the police department. What's reserve spec?
Is, so what we used to do before is our reserves would work events like Antique Market, Agnor Hall events. And the vendor would pay them under the table essentially.
Right.
So now we pay them through payroll in this line. So if a reserve works Antique Market, we pay them thirty-five dollars an hour, which is in our salary ordinance, times the number of hours. And then we in turn bill that vendor for that pay officer pay.
Okay, plus their, plus their benefits, or just their?
No, no, no.
Just the thirty-five an hour.
Just.
So they're getting their pay and then we're paying our benefits on that pay?
Well, that's all, that's a fixed cost.
Yeah.
Well, these are, these are reserves, so they don't really, only think we want.
Right, right, sure, yeah.
Okay, that.
No, I think we're not.
I'm sorry, I was talking about.
So police reserve special events, what that spec is.
Yeah, this is just reserves, this is not anything full time.
So now they're, that being said, they will pay taxes on it now, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think.
We wanted, we wanted it to run through.
Well, four did that way, they did it years ago.
It was up to them if they made over six hundred bucks.
Right, that they would file it.
Got it.
And then we also, we also had on, you know, when we did additional appropriation, that was one of the line items where we basically, we started this year. And so we had appropriate money in there, so we basically started this year, but next year we're just budgeting for it, yeah.
Got it.
So I mean, I don't know if it's something, and this is, be another subject, if we have, there's a fee that's associated with, on top of that thirty-five dollars an hour to the, for the special events? Just for the mere fact that we have some payroll expense?
We, we are reimbursed from Antique Market, we are reimbursed from Agnor Hall, whoever rents it out.
I'm talking about beyond the thirty-five dollars an hour.
The thing is, those are all fixed costs, Justin, it doesn't, it's not really an additional cost. You know what I mean?
We don't have any additional time, there's no additional money.
Be paying overtime, if that was the case, and I think we're paying a overtime.
Well, we have the employer side of the FICA Medicare tax, and we don't charge that seven point six five percent.
That's true.
That's what I'm talking about, that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean. I mean, we have, we have, there's, anytime we pay, there's, there's, there's money associated with that, that.
Yeah, I know.
So I mean, so I mean, we could have these reserves out there doing work all the time, but we're gonna be paying the, the offset expense of those things. So that's something we need to.
Yeah, we.
Consider. I do agree, bringing them back, paying them through this is better for them and.
When I think of it as a liability thing, because they're in City of Lawrenceburg uniforms.
Yeah. I know, I think it's the right way to do it, but there's, there is more expense associated with that, that we have to consider to cover.
It's a good point. It's a real good point, actually. Spoken from a self-employed contractor that employs people.
Who knows, who knows the cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure of that.
Yeah.
Okay, page eighteen, I think I'm seeing is, it looks like we dumped the ramp dredging and, but we added the Tanner's Creek boat slips. Now that meaning there's gonna be more slips down there for boats.
No, that's the, that's the project that we actually.
Last night?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's part of that project.
Oh, that's that project, okay, that's what we were gonna ask about that.
That we've, we've already budgeted some money for.
Got you, got you.
I guess about a tenth of the way there.
Yeah. Come on.
All right. Page nineteen, and this is just Tom Rellet's thoughts. For one.
Really?
I was just, you know you're in trouble, that's all it's worth.
We are, I'm just gonna ask. I see how, in my opinion, and I'm talking about three eleven, the adult center, how they are trying their best to be self-sufficient. I would ask, if at all possible, if you guys would be interested in maybe raising them just this year to a hundred and fifty K, and if not, that's fine. It's just, I'm just asking.
I, I would say yes, if, I'm not voting, but I'm gonna give you my reason that I would only say yes.
Okay.
If it doesn't deter them from going and getting additional funds elsewhere. Because that's what usually happens.
Yeah.
Is somebody will come to us and wanting additional funds, and that keeps, gets them off the hook.
I, I follow.
You know what I mean?
Yep, I got you.
Well, they're being, just, just, we just approved last night, a creative way that they're being motivated to start to do some funds.
And I'm glad they're doing it, that's good.
So let's.
Okay, and that's fine, I mean, I'm just asking if nobody wants to do it, that's fine. The only thing I thought was maybe this would get them up over the edge, and next year they could get things going, and it would be, the following year, yep, you're back down to a hundred and twentieth that.
Right.
I'm not saying yearly, I'm just saying just this year, and as me as a board member, I would make it perfectly clear to that board.
Well, you're right on top of it.
This is a white, right, we're gonna do this one time to get you through, over the hump. Because we see what you're trying to do, that's just my.
Yeah, I felt like they didn't start really on level ground. They had a hole they had to climb up to to even start, right? So they were just short this year all along.
Yeah, didn't you one time already have to give them money ahead of time because?
I think they decided not to take it ahead of time, didn't they?
No, they did once.
They can get their funding in January, but they asked to get it quarterly and not all at once.
Right.
And then I think it was the second quarter, they actually needed it before it was due, or it's the third quarter.
Sometimes I wonder if it's better to go quarterly, but then again, I don't know.
How to, I mean, is, is, we appropriate money in July, usually we do another appropriation mid, mid-year? I mean, would it be difficult to, I mean, we could choose to pay ahead in twenty twenty-three? And if, if, if they're showing that, hey, there's a need here that, that would be silly for us not to fill, then we can reappropriate that in the middle of next year and appropriate some more money, if, if that. I mean, I want to see them succeed too.
Yeah, well, I mean, you gotta remember that we did take them out of the Riverboat sharing.
Yes, we did.
You know, and that money, that money's not budgeted in here, is it?
Riverboat sharing?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's in total.
Budget Riverboat sharing for the nonprofits, not the government entities.
Not the government, that's where, that's what it is, it's not the government, so we took them out, so yeah, yeah, so.
I, I, I personally think they're trying to do what they can to be self-sustainable.
Yeah.
I agree, there's, there's already some larger plans kinda come to fruition, hopefully for next year, a couple more fundraiser type of opportunities and.
Right.
I like it.
Yeah.
I just, like I said, I'm in favor if, if you think that'll help get over, but, but I just don't wanna discourage, I don't wanna make it to where they don't start, go after these others.
Because now they're gonna, oh, yeah, we can go back around in, you know, and I get that.
And I'm not saying they would, but I'm just.
Well, even if we did, I, I would make sure that they understand, look, we're gonna do that, but if you guys start dragging behind, it's never gonna happen again.
Yeah.
We're just trying.
And we did.
But again, this is, I want your guys' input, because I'm not gonna, I would, I'm just asking. If we do it, we do it, if we don't, we don't.
And we, we did cut seven of our nonprofits.
Yes.
This, this budget session.
Yeah.
Just, and they were very understanding.
Yeah.
Reasons why, but, and I, but I agree with Mark too, I mean, I don't know that we knew what that beginning balance was, because Brett made a comment to. I don't know, maybe, maybe the magic number is one fifty, not one twenty, I don't know, but.
I'm just saying for just this year.
Yeah.
And letting them know that, and like, from this point on, and I think they're heading that direction, it's just, just my.
I'm concerned, how, are they gonna get through twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be by skin or teeth, Ruth Ann told us, but yes. Yeah. She's trying to get a couple of the, what they call them, where.
They've got some.
Christmas displays, people come in and set up.
Yeah.
Craft shows.
Craft shows, trying to do a couple of them, they're doing the bucket drive.
They've got a list of potential sponsorships between businesses.
Going out after, I mean, she, she's hitting the door.
Yeah, they're, they're nail in holes.
The only thing is, is those kinds of things are not gonna move the needle to the point where they need it.
No.
I get it, it'll help, but when you're asking for thirty thou, let's say they, thirty thousand more, you gotta do a lot of craft shows to get to thirty thousand dollars profit. And bucket drive.
Well, I, I think, I think the issue for the remaining, remainder of the year was just like, what can we do this weekend? Or what can we do tomorrow?
Yeah. Rather than like. A carnival, a carnival last Friday.
Right, yeah, they, they don't have the luxury to host or plan an event in January, because that doesn't help them right now.
Well, I'm, I'll be honest too, I mean. There's, that, that place is utilized by a lot of people.
It is.
And they're not all from Lawrenceburg.
Yeah.
I think they could approach these, some other entities at a little higher, go to, go to them the same way they come to us and say, you know, hey. And I'll just say it, hey Greendale?
Yep.
Instead of giving us whatever, X, can you give us three times X, or two times X?
She raised county.
At the county, yeah.
No doubt.
County, can you give us three times X instead of just X?
No doubt.
It's legitimate ask.
I mean, are their contributions anywhere near what we contribute?
No, nobody's.
Greendale's probably the only one that gives them anything, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know that the county gives them anything, and I think Greendale may give them five thousand.
Five grand, I think.
Well, I, I, I appreciate your, you bringing this up, Tommy, because I mean, that is it, that being utilized, we, we do need programming for our seniors.
Absolutely.
That's the whole purpose of that, and we have an aging population here, and that's, so it is a critical element, we're so far so good, happy with the new board that's come in and excited about where they're gonna take it, so.
I mean, she started membership fees and everything.
That's what I was gonna mention, yeah.
And she is really, they're doing the right thing. I think they are, man.
They are.
Ruth Ann and, and Loretta, they're not going to let.
They're sharp.
Sorry, ain't nothing gonna get bottomed to.
They're sharp.
We lose them, we're in trouble, we're gonna need a Brittany over there.
A what?
A Brittany is a.
I'm just saying, I, I think.
That's the adult center, Brittany, signed you up already.
Yeah.
It's like any nonprofit here in the area, that, that, everybody, everybody does come to Lawrenceburg, and I'm glad that we can help everyone that we can help. But why they don't feel like they can go to these other entities and ask for more money is beside me.
I don't.
Beyond me, I, I don't understand.
Well, it's not.
I think we can relate that message.
Yes, so you know, this is nothing that they brought to.
Absolutely, no, I get it.
This is me attending these meetings and seeing that she's really going, I'm like, you know what? I know how we've cut a few, maybe if, again, if we can get them over the next year.
Yeah.
Because as Mark stated too, you know, we cut back the. Because as Mark stated too, you know, we cut back the.
Might be worth just putting it on our, our grant radar as well to, to, you know, as, as Judy's sifting through different grants and different things.
That's another thing.
They just got them a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant for the, uh, they, we did all that work.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
And then we even added to it because it went over budget.
And we discussed that at the last meeting, and Judy said that she would work with Sarah, not giving her Sarah's name, and they're gonna try to work that out.
What was that, was that, what was that for, the two hundred and eighty?
They had addition and.
Whole building upgrade.
Yeah, it was an upgrade.
They redid the whole building.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Three, three years ago.
Yep, right before we came in.
And, and then.
Yeah, because Marie got.
Then it went over budget.
Marie ran the contractor, engineer, somebody, anyway, so whatever we, you guys decide.
Well, so there are grants out there.
Yeah.
That are potentially could help, so let's just keep, let's just keep that on our radar.
Yeah.
You know, if we can.
And that, that's a really good connect too, for Sarah and them over there.
Well, I think the, the five, I mean, and, and, you know, if you, if you say this to them, I mean, everybody will take it and run with it, but nobody's ever gonna let them fail.
No.
But, but other entities need to step up.
I agree a hundred percent with you. We're always the golden goose, man, I'm telling you, always been. So, am I sensing that we wanna leave it at one hundred and twenty? Or do you wanna go? I'm asking.
Uh, I'm okay leaving it at one twenty and, and just.
And if something happens, we appropriate money next year.
In the middle, yeah, if, if they start, if they can show to us that, hey, there's, this is something that's gonna help us get over this hump, then we would, you know, we'll do everything we can to help.
I mean, that's better than nothing.
Yeah.
We could find out next year.
Well, and they, you know, can, can we, as the board members, assure them?
Yeah.
You know, hey, we, we talked about it, and this is what we feel, but you're gonna have to show us that you're not trying, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw it out there like this, you know, I mean.
I would ask them though, that, don't be, don't be shy about asking Greendale and the council for, or county for more than five thousand or.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, don't be shy about asking for twenty each.
Yeah.
Then you got your hurdle.
Yeah.
Because that's, they sharing, revenue sharing as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and, and my thought on it is, and I think, you know, we've all talked a little bit here and there about it, but, you know, with, with the riverboat money going down.
Oh, I get it.
The mayor and I, of course, Brittany, she's sitting there, we had to make a lot of tough decisions, and every meeting that we had, we basically kinda said the same thing, what you guys just said right there, is like, there's other things out there, you know, try what you can do, you know?
Okay.
Uh, we, you know, and everyone on that left, we, we kinda told them, we said, well, we'll help you in any other way we can, or, you know, if, if things come a certain way.
I get it, I get it.
Um, but that's kind of what the story we gave pretty much everybody, and, and they were pretty.
Well, we showed them the numbers.
It's just factual, there's thousands of other boards right now having a very similar conversation nationwide right now, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, money is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we, I hope we don't have to experience, but wait till Kentucky comes on board.
Oh, I, I told my wife.
And then our, our revenue is gonna drop, probably again.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's on its way.
It's gotta drop some, yeah, but hopefully not much.
Everybody's wanting, wanting, gonna wanna see that new facility. So, we're gonna leave it at one twenty.
For the time being.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And you guys can explain it to them?
I, I, no problem.
I think that'll be.
They don't really know anyway.
And there's a few of us here saying that we're for them, you know, we won't, you know.
Heck, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Heck, yeah.
I think I'll figure out a way to, why tell them, look, if we get through next year, like, if you're into next year like you are right now, maybe come to us and see if, I'm just gonna say, maybe we can reappropriate some money to get you through. If you can't get it going, I don't know, I just, I don't wanna see them fail, and I don't think they will, cause they, I, I, again, I know I keep repeating myself, they really are trying, I am so pleased with them. Okay, all right. Page twenty, four oh two, top of it, what is election expenses?
Election year coming, and we got, we got expenses with Agner Hall and stuff, right?
Okay.
And then paying.
I thought someone was.
The county bills us.
County action bills us.
Okay, I'm like, sir, who's wanting campaign money?
Yeah.
Well, it says election expenses.
Put in there by Fetty and the mayor.
We put that in Lenny's, uh, Ferris wheel.
But to be honest with you, when Mr. Naupur and I were in there in my office doing it, he goes, that's what that's for, Tom, I said, I'm still asking the question.
And that's just an estimate based on what it was four years ago.
What, what actually are we built for?
Um, I think it's they, it's a state, like if the state allows it, it's a certain amount per, I think it's your, the number of voters or something. I don't remember the exact term, I'd have to look it up, but.
To help pay for ballots and everything else, probably.
Yeah, so the count, the county typically will send us an estimate, I'm surprised they haven't, uh, maybe we'll get it.
Because it's city.
That's, that's what it was in nineteen ninety.
Yeah, I seen that, I'm like, what is he trying to see in here? I'm not going to jail for anybody.
Just curious what exactly was on the, like, itemized bill.
I could, um, like, you know, like last, the last.
I'm not, not in a hurry.
I see that we, on that as well, um, four fifteen, on that same page.
Mm-hmm.
On there with the S, the SROs that, is that something that, I know we put in for two thousand and twenty-three, did that work out as planned?
Yeah, I think it is, except, uh, they're having a hard time getting eight SROs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, they'll hire two and one will quit.
Yep.
They'll hire three, two will quit. I think they were doing more interviews today to fill some spots.
I don't ever think, I don't even ever think they reached the eight number initially.
They got to seven.
Yeah, God dropped out.
Yeah.
So.
They got to seven.
So, when we give them that money.
Yep.
Along, someone else is giving, Greendale's giving them money as well, right?
That, that's to match the school safety grant that they get.
Okay.
That's been in effect for years with Greendale.
So, just to say it, say it in layman's terms or whatever, Carl's not getting a little extra money because he's not fulfilling all the positions.
I did see something just recently where the state came down for the same thing and gave each school.
Additional?
Quite a bit additional grant money.
Did they?
Yes, a lot.
Well.
I saw, I did, that, I, now that I think about it, I didn't see that where Lawrenceburg received, like, I'm pretty sure it was like a hundred thousand.
Additional money?
Additional, but that may be for like door safety.
Okay.
Things like that, I don't know, but it might be worth.
Before they would request anything, um, I'll have that conversation with Carl and say, hey, show me where, you know.
But I thought the state did come down and give additional.
Because our whole thing, yes, our whole thing, conversation was that, uh, they would end up having two in each school. They had funding for four, and he said, to, to fund an additional four, it would be two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, if I remember right, you were in that meeting up there, and, and I said, well, if we committed two hundred, you're gonna have to find out where you're gonna get the other seventy-six.
Mr. Salty.
Will we require them to show and, to provide any?
You never gonna let?
What'd you say?
Will they be required to show any, like, proof of anything to get this, this funding, or?
Well, I, I think it's proof of employment, I mean, we just gotta make sure that they got, I, the whole reason that I, I had brought this up to you guys.
Yes.
And, and, and then to, to the school was because I felt this was a way we could help ensure safety of our kids and staff. Well, if, and, and the two hundred thousand was a carrot if they hired four. Now, if they can only do, get two for the remainder of the year, whatever, then I'm not contributing two hundred thousand dollars. I, I mean, I wouldn't think.
Essentially, you're putting fifty thousand dollars per person, or, or, you're essentially two hundred thousand for people, fifty thousand.
I guess you'd say, I guess.
Yeah, it'd be hard to figure that math out, because they don't work a full year.
Yeah.
At thirty dollars an hour.
Some is just, that's easy numbers, they, we said we wanna help.
I would just tell him that, you know, hey, we, we gotta be fair about this.
Yep.
And, and, uh, I, I don't have any reason to believe that Carl wouldn't wanna be fair.
I don't, I don't either.
No, no, no.
I would never.
He knows that we, we do whatever we can for the schools. But I, before he would ask for anything, I, you know, we, we'll question it.
On that, so, probably a question for Carl, what are the other neighboring schools doing for SROs?
A lot of them get, uh, either retired cops if they can get them, or, uh, the county, I think, even has like, uh, they provide one for out of, some in Dearborn and.
Okay.
Maybe one at South Dearborn.
Out of similar account that our goal is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know how they're individually done.
Yeah.
Yeah, and see, we always used to supply one SRO.
Sure.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And we brought him back.
As a patrolman.
As a patrolman.
Yeah.
And we're going, not an SRO.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
You're right.
I wanna clear it up too.
Only cleaned up. Killed a messenger here.
So, but going down to the next i- item, down police equipment, a few items below that, is, is that, there's a lot remaining in that account? Is that something that was?
Which one?
Um, four fifty, four sixty-one?
Four sixty-one.
Oh, which, where are we at?
Four sixty.
Same page.
Oh, page twenty.
Halfway down twenty, um.
Oh, sixty-one, police equipment. Uh, yeah, we moved the, well, I think we used to put, didn't we put the, uh, the cars and ammo and all that other stuff in that? And then we moved it out and put it somewhere, didn't we?
Well, what I think Justin's talking about is the hundred and forty thousand remaining in that account for this year.
Oh, that, I'm sorry.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah, I mean.
It's eighty percent, there's still eighty percent of the money remaining in that account, that's what you're talking about.
And then there's nothing budgeted.
They didn't buy their, um, they had budgeted for two vehicles, they haven't, they didn't buy them until July, this is through May.
Okay.
So, they spent seventy thousand dollars just in July on two vehicles.
Okay.
And then anything that's remaining at the end of the year goes back into the.
But then, where is that line item for the future?
It, um.
There's no line item?
Yeah, where did you move it?
Twenty-three degrees.
It's under, go ahead.
We moved it to public safety lit.
Public sa- lit, okay.
It's in lit as well.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Those revenues are projected to go up.
All right.
Okay, I'll sit right there, four sixty-one, got it.
So, that's just cleaning the books up even more, essentially, getting it out of MDF.
I, I, I'm telling you, I'd like what you guys done this year, I just.
Well, public safety lit's fairly new, we got it a few years ago, so it's.
Seems like it's gonna be more self-sustaining.
Building, so it's, the balance has gotten much healthier, so we decided we could move more budget into that.
Okay.
And free up MDF.
All right.
It's hard to believe, but that's all I have.
What?
You heard me.
There's still a lot of pages left.
Goodness. I went over.
That was Lenny's responsibility.
Yeah.
I'm.
Hey, going down on the very bottom page, just to help.
What page again?
Um, the very last page.
Okay.
Very last page?
Last page is twenty-eight.
Last page is all of the funding, the funds.
Yes, oh, yes, four forty-four.
So, these are, this is, this is, when, when it says revenue, it doesn't necessarily mean revenue, does it? I mean, I mean, I'm looking at Parks and Recreations, we have five hundred and fifty-nine thousand revenue. Is that revenue that's funded by something else that we're receiving in, and we put toward that fund?
Parks revenue, Parks Recreation would be primarily property tax.
Okay, so that's revenues coming in.
Excise tax at FIT.
And that goes directly into the Parks and Rec, that's the revenue from property taxes.
Which funds our Parks Department employees and our part-time and our full employees.
Okay, so that's in, that's.
You said four, full employees as well?
Comes from Parks.
Um, both riverboat and MDF or casino?
Mm-hmm.
Primarily, yes.
Primarily, okay. Is that, um, so, when I see revenue versus budget, um, help, help me distinguish, that's just how much we're gonna use out of those funds, the, what we're planning on trying to budget in those funds?
So, the revenue line would be what the dollars that we're estimating that fund will receive in two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay.
Does not take into account the balance that it already has. So, you may have, for say, rainy day, it looks very lopsided, and two twenty-four, well, the revenue is kinda high, but, um, some of them, like rainy day, have been receiving lawsuit money over a period of a couple of years, so you're not gonna get that lawsuit money every year.
Mm-hmm.
So, the spending and the revenue may be a little offset timing wise.
Okay. And then you look at the balance on the far right.
The far right would be where it's projected for the, yeah, the cash investments to be by the end of twenty-three.
Okay.
Assuming the budget's.
And then the, the red symbols are an increase in the, the balance? Is that, is that accurate?
The red would be, um, what we're spending over what the revenues are projected to be for that given year.
Okay, so, just help me, the only reason, I was trying to figure out the red and green, unsafe building, two thirty-four, it has a negative twenty-five thousand, but then in cash investments, it has the twenty-five thousand.
So, it's, uh, projected to end two thousand and twenty-two with a fifty thousand dollar balance.
Okay.
And it will receive zero revenues in twenty-three, but spend twenty-five thousand in the year with twenty-five.
Okay.
So, it looks like a deficit, because it's not receiving revenues in twenty-three, but it's because it was already funded in twenty-two.
Okay, so the, the, the budget, when we see the total budget number for two thousand and twenty-three, um, that's, that's including, um, lawsuit. Additional cost, or, I'm sorry, additional gain from those, I mean, the, going back to the rainy day fund, we're saying two thousand and twenty-three budget for the rainy day fund.
If, if I'm understanding your question, so if you look at the projected balance of four point one six million, million dollars.
Yes.
That would be from, funded from previous lawsuits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we're estimating in twenty-three, it's gonna have about one point seven million in revenue, spend one point four, so to end the year with a positive.
Two point, it'll be positive, two point nine.
Well, it's gonna get one point seven, but two thousand and twenty-three budget's gonna spend four point seven.
Oh, four point seven, yes, yes, sorry, I looked at the wrong year. So, it looks like we're spending well over what our revenues are for that year, but it's because of previous years, we've put lawsuits and dollars in there that we're not gonna get in twenty-three.
Okay. And then even with that increase in spending, the three point three million dollar increase in spending, we will still have four point one remaining projected at the end?
Yes.
Okay. So, we, so, all right.
See, I guess when I looked at that, just for clarification, I thought maybe that three point seventy-one thirty-one or whatever was because of this across the street plus that up there.
Is that what the four point seven is being spent on?
Yes.
Those addition, okay, that's, that's what we were trying to connect, okay, got it.
It does look lopsided.
Yeah, that's the additional projects.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that's what we thought.
Right, that's, okay, we're just trying to connect the dots.
So, don't, when I say it, it doesn't make me feel so bad, cause I know what's going.
It's not like we're going to end the year with a negative balance in rainy day, we're just, we're spending money that we received in previous years.
Right.
And haven't spent yet.
Yeah, I mean, we probably should have added another line, beginning balance, you know, in those accounts, that way you can probably see it a little bit clearer.
Yes.
Just in, just in the breakdown? Yeah.
Well, we can see that it, after, well, whatever's over, add what's over onto what's gonna be in it at the end of the year, and that's your, that's your previous balance.
You can figure it out, yeah.
Right, got it, so it was gonna be more like seven.
Probably should have added that column, yeah.
Oh, that, that, okay, that's just, just trying to get some clarity there.
Yep.
Um, so, general, um, twenty-three budget, um, with those additional projects and those kinda things, is gonna, we're still, there's still a surplus essentially?
We, uh, and then we usually generally have a surplus in the total budget of, I don't know, four to six percent generally that goes back into the offered.
From the previous, from year to year.
From twenty-three, like, we'll, we'll budget everything in twenty-three, but usually, like the mayor says, there's a cer, there's a certain percent that we're not gonna spend out of that. So, that would be the surplus.
And that's mu- pretty much historical.
Right, I, I, that makes sense there, I guess.
We historically do not spend what we budget.
When I sit there and look at accounts payable every month, and then, you know, twice a month, and then what we budget, I'm like, man, these numbers don't jive.
Except, except for this year, it looks like we're gonna project to spend more than we budgeted for.
In twenty-two? In twenty-two?
Twenty-three.
Well, it looks like it, because we got three and a half million dollars in. Project money that is showing up in there as well, but at, at the end of the day, we, we won't. We won't spend that thirty-five, five eighty-five, is, am I making sense there? The thirty-five million, it's a twenty twenty-three budget, generally, we'll, we even put four to six percent of that. Goes back in, it doesn't get spent.
We're gonna spend it, we're just not gonna spend it based upon our revenue, we're gonna spend it based upon our coffers, I mean, essentially in different locations, right? I mean, we're still spending that money.
Oh, yeah, but, but four to six percent of the total budget usually goes back, is what I'm saying.
And that's annually.
With the exception of this year, but with the exception of twenty-three.
No, I think it was still, we won't know that.
You don't know till, till.
I was saying, historically, we always sent, you know, have four to six percent or whatever that number was.
I understand, and I've, I've kinda watched that over the years, I'm just, I'm just looking at, you know, projects, you know, cause we just have to, we have to be conscious of. What projects we want to afford, we can afford a lot, but which, we have to choose. You know, we have a lot of projects on the docket right now.
And you gotta remember, the, uh, the projected revenues, you know, some of those are guesses at best, I mean, you know, just going, they're going past history, they're going. Taking a look, a lot of information, um, you know.
Forget, you're, 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 you're right, we do have a lot of projects, but not all of them, they're not only gonna hit in September twenty-three. You know what I mean, you may have a couple hit in twenty-three, you may have two or three hit in twenty-four, and a couple hit in twenty-five.
Yeah, and, and the thing is.
So I mean, you know, we, that, that's good for.
And what we do every year is, when we, when they don't hit, and we know that we're gonna spend in the following year, we'll cover in, into the fa, into our budget into the following year. You know, even though they were budgeted the previous year, so, a lot of times, these things have already been budgeted for, we just didn't cover it into the next year, so. It enables us to spend them in that year when we know we're gonna be able to, and sometimes we just take them out because project's not gonna happen.
Yeah, exactly right.
Well, thank you for the clarity.
How about you, is we coming there, CS?
We didn't want anything from ours, did we?
Letting you be here at five.
I'm here, guys.
We should carry this thing on for at least another.
I know it.
See him come in, you know, just to see, yeah, just to see, get him on video.
Alright, thanks for your clarification, Brittany and Eric.
This is good to have, I'm telling you, this is good to have, I've, I've not ever had this before, man, I'm telling you, I said every year, but I mean it. We got the money, just go ahead.
Not the way it works.
Well, in this way, you guys at least have an.
Yeah.
Let her.
What number?
Explain it better.
Five one seven six?
And Brittany and I talked before we came over the ARP, we, we found the, the exact number, Billy gave us the number for the utility forgiveness. The budget, you know, we thought we was gonna have a little bit more money to be able to spend out of the ARP next year, so that number's gonna come down by. Probably a hundred thousand or so, just a little bit over, so.
And the time we did was halfway through the month.
So it was, it was an expensive month, last month.
You know how much I water my wife's plants? Yes, I do, I water them.
I like the idea, Tony, he, he turned his water.
How many pounds it was? Eight thousand.
Thousand.
Left it on for almost.
All night? I've done that before too, so.
You, you must.
I keep my wife's flowers watered.
You must have drowned.
She's gonna call me out if she, she hears this meeting.
My wife knows what I do, she's, as soon as she retires, she's gonna have a lot of me too, I got a hundred.
So what's next, Brittany, as far as the schedule on the, the, the budget, uh, hearings?
Um, I'll make these changes, it has to be posted on Gateway by, I think it's September twenty-first, so once we post it, we can't, we cannot increase anything, we can decrease.
Cause we got the, we got the table right now, mister.
And then the first.
How you doing?
October, we will have our public hearing.
You're fine, Paul. If it was Dell, I wouldn't let him in.
We've got, we've got our, we got everything on, on target there.
Well, all I can say is it's been a pleasure spending all your money.
Any, any other questions?
I have no.
Um, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
On paper? Oppose? Thank you.